We call a public hearing meeting to order. May I have a question, please call the board.
Trustee Bill.
Here.
Trustee Brewer.
Here.
Trustee Grant.
Here.
Trustee Consensi.
Trustee.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Here.
Okay, item, um, to be discussed, is going to be discussed by village engineer, Mr. Jim Darnett. Thank you, bro. Hello. All right. So this is the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Public Hearing. It's required by the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, or I E P A, in accord with the villagers' notice of intent for the Illinois General Permit, I L R forty. The permit is performed on a five-year cycle. The next notice of intent is due on October first, twenty twenty, this year, for the new permit cycle beginning in twenty twenty one. So the goal of the program is to eliminate pollutants from entering the storm sewer, or detention ponds, and depositing into rivers, lakes, creeks, which are the ultimate outward points for Sauk Village, these would be the Lansing Drainage Dish and Air Creek. There are six required minimum control measures, or M C Ms. The first is public education outreach. This is what the village has done to inform the public, and there are two items. The annual report is posted on the website, and a pollution prevention flyer is also posted on the website. As a reminder to the public, do not dump oil, paint, or other chemicals down the sewer, and clean up after your dogs, in your yard, and parks. The second minimum control measure is public involvement and participation. This public hearing is an example of that. The village welcomes public involvement. Call Public Works if you notice any spills, and the village just screams. The third minimum control measure is illicit discharge detection and elimination. The village has an ordinance that it uses to address illegal discharges to village waterways. Public Works has identified all outfalls within the village. Village maintains an updated sewer atlas that indicates all the outfalls. Village's goal is to inspect twenty percent of the outfalls on an annual basis. The fourth minimum control measure is control of construction site storm water runoff. Village has an erosion control ordinance in place to address construction site storm water runoff. Developers are required to provide a storm water pollution prevention plan, which addresses how to prevent erosion at construction sites. Developers are required to inspect their sites weekly during construction and after rain events. The fifth minimum control measure is post-construction stormwater management. Village has a post-construction ordinance in place to address long-term control of stormwater pollution from newly developed sites. Final inspections are required before the developer can leave the site. Tensions required for all developments in the village, detention ponds, and other post-construction measures, filter out settlements prior to the settlement being leased to the back end. And the final minimum control measure is pollution prevention, good house keeping. Village conducts street sweeping, branch pickup, and leaf collection periodically throughout the year. Village's goals include twenty percent of village's catch basins per year, to prevent the collective material from reaching the village's waterways. Village requests public's help in inspecting inlets and catch basins and keeping them clear of debris. A goal is for rounds and engineering, or village staff, to develop a municipal operations program and storm water management program for storm water best management practices. So our annual activities moving forward consist of annual report is made to the I E P A each year by June first, ordinances and storm sewer atlas are reviewed yearly, Public Works will conduct in-house training for good housekeeping practices, Public Works will mow and remove litter from detention ponds, Public Works is also participating in a watershed group organized to implement control measures that will reduce chloride contamination in watershed receiving streams. And finally, rounds and engineering will ensure that developments comply with storm water ordinances and flood plain regulations. Turn it back over to the mayor, if you could ask her a question. Yes, at this time, we'll ask a public comment. We would like to come up to the podium and address the items on the agenda only, and as always, each person is allowed one opportunity to speak up to three minutes. And in this case, if it's something dealing with, which it is dealing with the public hearing, um, I'll ask Jim, do you want to address each one individually, or do you want them to, do you want to wait until after all those questions have been asked?
I would say individually.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Okay. Now, I'll ask the board, I'll start with trustee Wade, if you have any questions.
Trustee.
Trustee Bill. Trustee Grant. Trustee Todd.
No questions.
Trustee Brewer.
Yeah.
That being said, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Move by trustee Bill, second by trustee Todd, any questions? Motion carried. Call the meeting to orders, please stand for pledge allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Another question, please call the board.
Trustee Bill.
Here.
Trustee Grant.
Here.
Trustee Consensi.
Trustee Todd.
Here.
Trustee Brewer.
Okay. Item number two, motion to recess to executive session, discussion of personnel matters, update, pending litigation, collective bargaining, review of executive board meetings, edits, real estate, or employment and compensation as needed.
Move by trustee Brewer, second by trustee Todd, any questions?
Yes, is there anything on this executive session that's being voted on tonight? Was there anything that we're going into executive session?
To me, in other words, do you have, do you vote on, not, not that I know of, I mean, does anybody have anything to do with that?
I'm just gonna again state my concern that if there's nothing to be voted on, then the executive session should be at the end of the agenda. But it's already been a motion and a second to go into an executive session, and I just wanted to make that comment.
Lovely, call the board.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Consensi.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Motion carried. Motion to re-convince our regular board meeting, move.
Second.
Move by trustee Bill, second by trustee Brewer. Matter of fact, please call the board.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Consensi.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Bill.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Motion carried. Item four, motion to approve the general proceeds of the regular board meeting for December tenth, twenty nineteen, which recommended edits as needed.
So move.
Move by trustee Bill, second by trustee Wade, any questions? Out of work.
Trustee Bill.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
No.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Consensi.
Trustee Todd.
I was not, that being silent, standing.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Motion carried. Item number five, comments. Our question and comments will be delivered, be directed to the mayor, each speaker may comment on any matter pertaining to the business of Sauk Village. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes, and may that engage in debate. Comment replies, group votes, I'll answer all questions after all questions have been asked. Please state your name when you come up.
Good evening, Arnold Hogan here. I was here last week for the same reason I'm here today, and that is for the lights, all the lamps, or the streetlights on Jeffrey. In addition to the other four that are out, there's now a fifth one that's out on Jeffrey. It's been four months since the first four lights have been out, and now this fifth light is only with the fire, so. And, uh, mayor, would you please ask the director, or trustee involved with the director for Public Works, to give them that, I would really appreciate it.
Pat Couch, I'll try to be brief, but I have some things that are kind of on my mind. I'd like to know how we can all, all of our residents, get free water bills, free garbage, because there is a residence in Sauk Village that's been getting free water, maybe no water, free garbage picked up for over a year and a half. This house has had no water account since October the twenty-fifth of twenty eighteen. October twenty-fifth of twenty eighteen, this individual shut the water account off, and I know because it used to be in my name. During that year and a half, he is still living in that home, but he's getting free garbage picked up. Whether there's water in that house, I don't know, but the water account was closed. During that time, there's been a lot of jackhammering going on in that house. Due to the fact that I had a case with this individual where I was going to court, and I met a FOIA, asking about the permits issued for that house, the water account, and permits for that property. Now, in the past year and a half, there's been no permits per the FOIA, there's been no inspections per the FOIA, and no water account per the FOIA. Now, this has been allowed to go on for a year and a half. During the course of the case in court, this individual brought it up several times, the mayor's aware of this, the mayor's aware of this, he knows this house. Well, that's wonderful. So maybe we should all ask how we can get free water, free garbage, plus the fact he's also raising dogs in that house. He had a dog that had eight puppies, and I'll bet you there's no license, no tags, no nothing.
She had mine.
Thank you. And as of about a month ago, there has been no inspections on that property, no water bill, so I'd like to know how that happens, that they can get free services. Now, the other problem I'd like to address is, and I did speak with the chief tonight, and I'm really happy that he will be addressing this issue, because as of now, the pit bull is still in my backyard. As of last week, that pit bull spent five minutes on my porch, and at two-thirty in the morning, but now the chief says he will address that, so I will be watching for that to be handled. Thank you.
I wanted to address a safety issue first. I have brought it to the attention of several people over the past few months, but nothing seems to have done about it. When you enter the building or leave the building, there are metal plates on the wall that you can push to open the doors automatically. Those haven't functioned, and I don't know when the last time was that they functioned, but they haven't been functioning, and they need to be addressed. Secondly, I wanted to bring up the forensic audit. I was really surprised tonight when I didn't see it on the agenda. We've been working hard, screaming loud, that we need this, and we want this, and it's a necessity, and yet it's not on the agenda to be approved, that we do the forensic audit. Now, I've been told that perhaps it's because they're looking for, uh, they're giving out bids, and they're looking for bids on it, but then my question is, why would you get bids on something you don't have yet? Wouldn't it be smart to pass the motion and get the audit on the books, so that you can get the bids and go forward with it? Just asking. Again, I would like to mention, nothing on the, on the agenda about no hire and no pay raises. It's been talked about over and over, and yet there's nothing being done. It didn't take anybody long to get it done when they wanted to get rid of people. It didn't take this long, and it would have avoided a problem where an employee who was stripped from the budget wouldn't still be working in our village hall without the approval of the board. So this is something, again, the transparency isn't there. Doing what you want to do still remains, and people getting away with whatever still remains. It's rather sad. I also would like to add on to what Pat Couch had to say. In calling and talking with the health department in Chicago, this gentleman who has this house with no water or anything, shouldn't be in that home, and that's according to them. And I don't understand why, if I want to fix something in my house, I have to come and get a permit, but this man can do an overhaul, and not spend a penny, and say, the mayor
John Hinkle. You know, I thought we had a meeting here a while back that said, you guys were, it's gonna be a long time, you would have meetings at the end. I mean, hour and a half, it's kind of inconsiderate for all these people to sit here and waiting for you guys to do the business that you should be doing, but not that we have to be here and waiting for you to come back out. Other thing, what have we ever done with city stickers for the village? Have we ever done any checking to see if people are paying? How much have we lost in revenue with city stickers in the last year or so? And where I think for, for, please look at the, I don't know, the last few months, we went out and checked, and there's a lot of people passed me up, and I'm going a little over the speed limit myself, and they're passing me up. I think it would be nice to have a cop there once in a while, and stop signs on Jeffrey means slow down, nonstop. I'd like to have some of that looked at.
My name is Romana Myrd, and I'm.
Talking to my, did you?
My, you said my. Can you hear me now?
No.
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
My name is Romana Myrd, and three ninety-four right here, it's the gas station right here. Going as far as trying to right, not left. I had an accident right there coming down South Street. A woman came out, she made a left, and not a right, and I was wondering, was I in the wrong, or was she in the wrong? Because it's a sign, a big sign right there that says right, not left.
Things screwed up.
Huh?
The engine's running.
Okay, I'm done.
Every bathroom.
Okay. First of all, um, I am, can I put this, I mean, we're here to conduct business, and I'm sorry that it ran over a little bit, but that's what we, this is the only time we get a chance to conduct business on Tuesdays, and I understand that you're here, you're here, but a lot of times, the executive session can be lengthy, we have other things that have to discuss, and as I stated before, a lot of times, you know, it could go over, but we change it, and the board is something that we're supposed to be talking about pretty soon, about putting the executive session at the end, or we can vote it at the end, but a lot of times, doesn't necessarily have to be at the end, but today, it's one of those days that I thought it was gonna be a short session, and it's been a little longer, so I apologize for that, I apologize that you guys had to wait, but again, this is when we conduct our business, and we try to be as speedy as possible, but sometimes the sessions go a little long. As far as the lights on, on the street, Jeffrey, it was, it was given to the village, pardon, I'm sorry, Public Works Director, and also the village administrator knows about it, and I'm glad you made a statement that, about that, and I'm sure he wrote down in his notes that those lights are still on on Jeffrey, and we can definitely, it'll be looked at, and then hopefully, I won't say hopefully, I'll find out something, we can report it back to you at the next meeting, another day before it should be done, and find out if it is not why it happened there. A lot of information about the resident getting free water, garbage, or whatever, and they haven't had a B, I mean, they haven't had an account since two thousand and eighteen. That could be very well true, I mean, a lot of times we, and this is something that we've been working on as a village, as a board, for those people that don't have water accounts, or they don't pay their water bills, we disconnect them. And it is a health hazard, I always thought that, way back before I became a trustee, if you don't have water in your home, what are you doing? How can you live there? How can you even exist there without running water? And that's, that's something that I've always amazed, I was always amazed by hearing things like that happen, and, you know, as far as what the village can do, I mean, we have to call another agency to come out, you know, we have to find out, and then we have to get our lawyers involved, find out if we can put the person out, and we have legal rights to put a person out, because they don't have running water. But that's something that can be looked into, and I'm glad it was brought up, but two thousand and eighteen is quite a long period of time. And then it was stated that the pit bull is still around. Again, the department head, the chief, heard exactly that, and you said you talked to him, so I'm sure he's gonna be looking into that. The front door for the handicap, and you said it's not working, again, the village administrator is here, I'm sure he wrote that down, to find out why it's not working, because it should, if it's handicapped compliant, it should be working, so it may be something small, maybe something big, but I'm sure that it'll be addressed, and if you come in, I would say today is Tuesday, we should have some kind of answer between now and Friday, to find out why it's not working. Tomorrow will be a good time, and we're gonna find out why it's not working, it could be something minor, or it could be something major, but I'm not gonna guess on it, I'm going to have someone look into that. The forensic audit is something that the board has to decide on, so that right there will be something that, at a later date, that the board will discuss, and go forth with that. I do not discuss personnel matters, I've said that many, many times, so as far as personnel matters are, we're talking about, I don't, I don't discuss personnel matters on the public. City stickers, I mean, again, may I, I'm sorry, the police chief has listened to what you're saying, don't be surprised tomorrow when you come out there, and you have a road light out there. Not saying that you caused that to happen, but that's what happens, and that goes in all towns, they every now and then get periodically checked for seat belts, insurance, and not just stickers, they check for everything, and then also, we have a cold person that rides around, and they're authorized to give tickets to if there's a sticker on the car sticker. Usually, the police do that because they can call the police, and that's it. And the last thing, I'm sorry that that accident happened, but there is a sign on coming out of the gas and wash, the first entrance and exit is right turn only, and the second exit or entrance into the gas and wash, you can turn left or right. So if you got hit on the first one, and they made a left turn, hit your car there in the wrong, so how do you stop that? That's like everything else, I mean, you know, hopefully, people in our police department, I'm sure, is out there, I've seen them out there. They may not have been there at that particular time, looking at that, but they patrol a lot, and I have to give kudos to the police department, I've been around, I've been out in the village at nine, ten, eleven o'clock at night, and I have seen police officers walk back and forth, that's something I haven't seen in a while, but I've seen police officers patrol the streets, so they're out there. Now, they may not be where you want them to be at that particular time, but I have seen the cars out there, so I'm glad to say that. Okay, with that being said, um, report some officers. Tonight, I don't have a report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I will be brief. I just would like to draw your attention, and to those of you who's here, but then also those that are in the audience, I would like to draw your attention to an upcoming candidate forum, I spoke on it last week, I believe, but now I do have the flyers, all of the candidates have been formally invited, many of them have shown and expressed a great desire to be here before you, and I would just like to know, to make certain, and it's not for a good showing, but it's because it would show that so many people in our village are so looking forward to finally getting to meet some of the candidates that's running for office before they have to go in to actually vote the people that they don't know. So this is a meeting, great, an opportunity for you to get to know those people who would want to serve Sauk Village. It's an opportunity that I hope that you would all, along with your friends, avail yourselves of. I am pleased to report that, um, in the community center, we finally got in the new tables, I was there today, so I saw the new tables, we're still awaiting the chairs, and we're looking at redoing the floors and repainting. The community center, so that when we rent it out, and our residents, and their family and friends, who come to our village to support whatever event that they're having, that they will see a venue that looks very appealing. So that's one thing that we're working on. Another thing that we're working on where the community center is concerned, is not changing the locks on the doors, that's been erroneously announced. What we're working on is how to make it easier and to increase accessibility for those who are renting the community center, who experience problems with that horrendous lockbox that we have that's outside the police station right now. That's the only thing that's been working on, we're looking at making improvements. And I think that I'm going to end my reporting right there, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you. Village administrator, Mr. Chris Wade, you're the reporter. Village engineer, Mr. Jim Darnett.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to give an update on Sauk Village.
I would like to give an update on South Village Logistics Center Phase One study. HDR Robinson are working on preliminary road and railroad track design. Our core weapon jurisdictional determination is complete. Our target is to have a preliminary design submitted to CN Railroad by the end of the month. And finally, once the preliminary geometry is complete, we are aiming to begin detailed drainage design. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Treasurer, your report, Mr. Anthony Finch.
Governor, Mayor, Board, and Clerk. As of February 11, we have the following funds in our account. In the corporate account, one hundred fifteen thousand five hundred eighty-six dollars. The reserve account, eight hundred thousand. Water source, seven hundred sixty-three thousand thirteen dollars. Water source E-bank, one hundred fifty-three thousand one hundred eleven dollars. The line of credit, three hundred eighty-six thousand dollars. For a total available cash of two million two hundred seventeen thousand seven hundred and ten dollars. In the restricted funds, in the C N account, we have forty-two thousand four hundred sixty-one dollars. The DEA account, one hundred fifty-five thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars. The South Village Housing account, one thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars. The TIF account, six hundred thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars. The toll account, thirteen thousand seven hundred forty-three dollars. The holding money laundry account, eighteen thousand two hundred ten dollars. The spending drug account, twenty-four thousand two hundred forty-eight dollars. The spending money laundry account, eight hundred ninety-seven dollars. And in the M F T, two hundred thirty-eight thousand nine hundred forty dollars. For a total unrestricted funds of one million ninety-six thousand seven hundred twenty-four dollars. That concludes my report.
Did you say the last thing, unrestricted or restricted?
Restricted.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, treasurer's report, Mr. Mike DeGrasse.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, your report.
Okay. The reports of departments, finance department, uh, the treasurer, Anthony Finch.
Thank you, Mayor, Board, and Clerk. For February eleventh, um, the accounts payable payroll disbursement is as follows. Um, last payroll on January thirty-first was one hundred twenty-six thousand three hundred eighty-two dollars fifty-two cents. The accounts payable for February eleventh is three hundred eleven thousand six hundred fourteen dollars. For a total disbursement of four hundred thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty-three cents. That concludes my report.
Uh, that's not the number.
I'm afraid that's not what I have.
We had a total of four hundred forty-seven thousand one hundred forty-six dollars and fifty-three cents. That was on the back table right there.
I stand corrected, you are right. The difference, um, I do stand corrected. Three checks was paid prior to, um, to February eleventh, the accounts payable, and those are the checks that was pre-approved, um, from last meeting that was not on this report that I printed out. So the actual total of accounts payable is three hundred twenty thousand seven hundred sixty-four dollars. For a total of disbursement, four hundred forty-seven thousand one hundred forty-six dollars fifty-three cents. So I do stand corrected.
So, so the three checks that are on accounts payable, we already paid those.
Yes.
So then this number that we have, the four hundred forty-seven, is technically not right because we are approving accounts payable for what's left.
Your, your accounts payable actually may be approved with the severance, it's three hundred eight thousand three hundred sixty-four dollars. Because the three checks that's on your accounts payable is already approved last Tuesday.
All right. Uh, fire department, uh, Chief Stefan Bear.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board. The fire department responded to fifteen calls for a service period of January twenty-third to February sixth. I'm happy to report that there were no major incidents. Two more applicants are in the process of becoming firefighters. As soon as their background checks are complete, we will begin the drug and physical testing. I would like to take this time to thank the, uh, police department for their, uh, background check, uh, processing. Um, it's totally different from, uh, what we were used to and it cuts down on uh, getting all the people that is not gonna stay and be committed to our, our village, so I'd like to thank you, uh, police chief, for this new process. Also, uh, we swore in today, Lieutenant Paul Myers, as he came back today to our department. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board.
Thank you. Police Department Chief Malcolm White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Village Board. Um, for the last two weeks, the time period between, uh, January twenty-ninth and tonight, uh, the police department responded to four hundred thirty-eight calls for service. They also made a total of twenty-one arrests up until today. Uh, the next chat with the chief will be Thursday, uh, February twentieth at six P M. Uh, mark it on your calendar. Uh, the topics this week or that week will be, uh, some of the new Illinois laws, especially, uh, reviewing some of the cannabis laws. Uh, but there's also several other numerous, uh, crime tips and crime prevention issues, uh, that are discussed that night, uh, including some of our tactics, uh, which includes, uh, the more efficient way of crime prevention, uh, that helps, for instance, like what the gentleman mentioned, with parking tickets and village stickers. We absolutely do enforce that. We absolutely do sweeps. But it's more proactive in crime prevention if the officers get out and walk through the neighborhoods and look at the cars, especially after hours when people are asleep, because now you can see when people are creeping between houses. Uh, but I absolutely appreciate that. I'd love to see you come out for a chat with the chief this Thursday, the third Thursday of this month, on February twentieth. Um, also, on another note, um, for the last couple of months, uh, we've been missing a crossing guard, uh, normally, at least what I was told, was, uh, it's, they're normally recommended by the school district. Um, and they are looking for someone to fill that spot, I guess the person who hadn't felt ill. So if you could contact, uh, local, uh, I think the last principal I spoke with was at Strasburg. Um, if you know someone that's interested, it's just two hours a day, they're helping the kids cross the streets. And if you could pass the background, um, we'd love to have you in the police department conversation. Uh, Mr. Mayor, Village Board, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, um, Emergency Management Agency has left a report here for us to read as follows. Says, "Thank you, Mayor, Madam Clerk, Board of Trustees, and residents of South Village. The M M responded to two calls of service for the timeframe of February first to February seventh, twenty twenty. They are as follows. All accident at three ninety-four Eastbound, Saw Trail, one hour. Assist Cook County Sheriff's Police with investigation of accident Eastbound on Saw Trail in Sunset, five hours. March third, twenty twenty, South Village M M will be attending a pipeline training class in Alsop, Illinois, sponsored by Paragon." Paragon, I'm sorry. With the weather changing, please remember safety is important. Keep a safe distance between you and the vehicle in front of you. With the change in the weather temperature, make sure you have a safety care kit in your vehicle just in case you become stranded on the side of the road for a period of time. Safety kit contain, that contains some of the following. Make sure you have a full tank of gas and travel in bad winter weather. Extra set of clothes, extra socks, extra pair of shoes, boots, gloves, hat and scarf. Blanket, sleeping bag. Hand. Feet warmer packs, first aid kit, granola, protein bars, and medication, and your water. Flashlights and extra set of batteries and slayers. Ice scraper, collapsible snow shovel, jumper cables, and a bag of sand or non-clumping hand litter. Thank you, Mayor, Madam Clerk, and Board of Trustees and residents of, of South Village. This will conclude my report. Submitted by the Director, uh, Emergency Management Agency, Al Val. Okay, um. You're all way down to the force of trustees, the standing committee, Public Safety Committee, Trustee Gary Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, my committee meeting on February eighteenth, twenty twenty, at the Fire Department, eleven A M. And that's complete, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Public Service Committee, Trustee Bernie Brewer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, uh, Finance Committee has identified, uh, some M F T Finance Committee has, uh, you interrupted my report?
No, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just.
Okay. As I said, didn't get into it. Okay. The Finance Committee has identified some M F T funds uh, to use to address streetlights, the repair and placement of streetlights. We have a hundred thousand dollars that's, uh, in that particular fund. Uh, there are thirteen, um, streetlights that's out of service. Uh, we know we, we don't, we won't need the whole hundred thousand dollars, so I talked to Mr. Williams about getting together with the Public Works Director and seeing how much it would cost to get those streetlights, uh, repaired. Two of them are, um, something that Com Ed, Com Ed has to address, but the eleven other ones, we just need to find out how much the, uh, cost of it is. But there's funds out there, M F T funds, and, uh, there is a Finance Committee, uh, Mr. Finch, uh, Cynthia, uh, I'm sorry. The other person, the Assistant Finance Director and myself, talked about how much money is the M F T fund will be available. We have a hundred thousand and those funds, uh, can be used to, of course. No, I said Finance Committee, that's what I meant. Okay? But anyway, the hundred thousand dollars is, uh, part of the M F T funds that's available for, um, repair and replacement of the streetlights. And that ends my report. Now, to ease clarity on why I call the Finance Committee? Because we four have got together and we call ourselves the Finance Committee.
No, 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 no. Okay, first of all, okay, okay. No, Chief, Chief, Public Service Committee.
That's probably, yeah, probably.
So the next committee, that's not part of, the next committee is the Budget and Finance Committee, which is
I said Finance Committee, I didn't say Budget and Finance, I said Finance Committee.
Trustee, Trustee.
Oh, I'm talking to you, I'm sorry. Okay, go on, I'm sorry.
The next, the next person is the Budget and Finance Committee Chairman. So I don't know how you call it the Finance Committee, but the Budget Financial Chairman, Committee Chair, uh, Mr. Roger, Trustee Roger Grant, is in charge of the Finance Committee. You can't have Public Service and, and Finance Committee too, you can't just rename your committee, is what I'm saying.
I did not rename.
You just said, you just said that you and four, twelve people call yourself Finance Committee.
Okay. Okay, we'll call ourselves Finance Team, how about that?
Because I just told you so, I'm sure that's true, Trustee.
Uh, to identify those people who were involved in getting that money together, we're gonna call it Finance Team. Is that okay?
No.
Well, that's what we know for it.
I won't break it down there. Uh, Budget and Finance Committee. Pardon me? What's silly? What is silly? I asked you a question, what is silly?
That silly means that I can't call what I wanna call and you try to tell me what I can and cannot do?
All this little thing.
Go ahead, your court, your, your report, Trustee.
Well, I just wanna address something first. Um, so that's the Public Services Committee, there's not a Finance Committee, it's not a Budget and Finance Committee. Uh, just because yourself and the treasurer and the, and the, uh, village administrator get together, doesn't mean you're a committee. You could just say staff, uh, that's fine.
That's what you could say. I could say Finance Team.
Trustee, Trustee, please.
Thank you for your help.
Now to talk, please, please.
But don't be disputing what I said. Don't, we, we don't need to sit up here, we don't just want to, I'm talking to Finance Team and stop interrupting my work. Did you say that to Roger when he interrupted me?
Please, please.
Did you interrupt Roger when you inter, when you
Trustee, Trustee, please, please.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, did you interrupt Roger when he interrupted me? There you go.
Wow. Go ahead, Trustee.
Um. I'm gonna change my committee name too, but
No, most minutes, please.
Uh, so, uh, I'd like to talk about my committee, uh, about the policy procedures. So I still never received those comments back, but, uh, Madam Clerk, I would like to put that back on the, uh, the committee agenda for next Tuesday. The finance, uh, policy procedures, I was waiting on comments back. Um, I would like to discuss it on Tuesday. I never received any comments from any trustees. So I would like to bring it back on the agenda for Tuesday, so we can discuss it. Um, it's been out there for quite some time, so I think we should listen, discuss and talk about it as we begin to pass. Um, so if you can give your, uh, your questions or comments by this Friday, uh, hopefully I can have them addressed by the time we meet on Tuesday, we can have a meaningful discussion. And, uh, and that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, uh. Board, this is Duke Committee, Trustee, uh, Lieutenant Child.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We were scheduled yesterday to have, um, our, um, meeting, and I had to cancel it due to an emergency. So we've rescheduled it for Monday, February seventeenth. At, uh, six P M here in the Village Hall. And we have a full agenda on it because one of, two of the things that we are adjusting is the hiring and spending freeze. Now, I did ask for comments, two from the trustees, and I had not received them. So if you could get it to me by Friday, because we're gonna have the meeting. We also have several other things on there, the recap water. So we do have a full agenda, and Trustee Bell, we will address your issue when it comes to the, um, the desert, the side designations. So we'll get together on that, and that ends my report.
Okay. Thank you. Public Events, Trustee Debbie White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Today was the deadline for the Valentine for veterans. Uh, unfortunately, we got absolutely no money to fill out a Valentine at the Village Hall. However, the library, under the direction of their new staff member, Dion Miller, has several Valentines that we can send out to veterans. I appreciate everyone who did take the time to fill out a Valentine for the veteran. We will be addressing them tomorrow at the library at two o'clock. If anybody would like to be a part of that, I would appreciate your help. That was the February event. The March event, March fourteenth, Cook County Treasurer's Office will be here to offer help with property tax problems and assisting homeowners in the search for seventy-nine million dollars in available refunds and apply for forty-four million dollars in missing senior center, excuse me, senior citizen property tax exemptions. And you can check if your property taxes are delinquent. They will be here to assist you in any matters relating to taxes. And finally, um, I just wanna address the fact that we, as a board, just received today notification that there was an O M A violation against the Board of Trustees that apparently it's been going on for some time now, and we were not aware of it, but apparently it hit Facebook today, because that's where, how we get our information oftentimes. And we get this information from the South Village Illinois Facebook page because a lot of what happens in relation to this, this from Steve Aron, who was the person who, actually, he's right there, um, who actually, uh, did the O M A violation. Well, I, I have quite a few concerns about the O M A violation. And most importantly, it states that the board, the board, the board, uh, acted appropriately and did not pass minutes in a timely fashion. And it really particularly on one of them, there's two. On one of them, it pertains to minutes from September tenth and September seventeenth, that the board did not pass timely. I just wanna go on record at an open work meeting and not on a South Village Illinois Facebook page, that we did get those minutes and told whoever they were. When they were presented, they were approved. So for the people that think that I had anything to do with these minutes not getting approved timely, I approved them when they were presented, because South Village Illinois likes to make a point of me and this board and how we acted appropriately. We acted appropriately according to what was given to us. I have copies of both O M A violations here. If anybody does not go on South Village Illinois Facebook page, 'cause I don't, I just got this from somebody who does. I have copies of both O M A violations if you wanna look at them. And by next Tuesday, I will have a list of all of the meetings that were still not having been approved and also which ones have not been put on the website yet. Because part of this O M A violation is the fact that the minutes aren't getting on the website. So we need to be better as a board, but I just wanted on record, since the South Village Illinois Facebook page blamed the trustees for being responsible for this open meetings act. blamed the trustees for being responsible for this open meetings act and let the residents know that we're doing everything we can to correct this. Thank you very much, Liz, and I'm out.
Reports of committees and commissions, senior advisory council chair, and in front.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board, uh, I'm hoping to be the chairman of the Senior Advisory Committee. Uh, the report for February, ED 11, 2020, uh, is as follows. Our next meeting for the Senior Advisory Council is this Thursday, February 13th, at 5:00 P.M. and all are welcome. The right before, and right before the meeting at 4:00 P.M. We will be hosting our first membership drive. Anyone who is fifty and older and would like to be a member of Saw Village Senior Club and enjoy some of the senior benefits at, at, uh, at low and no cost are welcome to come out. Remember, members have privileges. Also come out and join our seniors for breakfast dingo every second and fourth Friday from 11:00 A.M. to 12:00 P.M. All seniors, don't forget game night. Every first and third Friday, come out for card games such as big whiz and other games from 6:00 P.M. till 10:00 P.M. Also, community members will be teaching the big whiz from 6:00 P.M. until 7:00 every first and third Friday for those of you who do not know how to play. Also seniors, our first senior luncheon of the year will be held at March the 26th and our first casino trip will be held April 15th. So stay tuned for more details. That concludes the report.
You know that's tax day, right? Next day. Figure out.
Tired, right?
I'm just... Okay, thank you. I'm finished, uh, I'm finished, Mr. Mayor, I'm out, new business. I'll entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable and disbursement dated February 11th in the amount of four hundred forty-seven thousand one hundred forty-six thousand fifty-three cents. Some... The move by trustee, uh, Todd, second by trustee Grant? I'm sorry. Bell? Okay, I hear some comments. Trustee Bell, any question?
I have a comment. Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, as described on the accounts payable, there's personnel listed on the, uh, for payroll, listed on the accounts payable that's on our records as going to be paid without advising the set of the, uh, board. I just wanted to put on record that this personnel has not been approved by the board yet we are going to pay them. Something's wrong with that. We need to go back and revisit how we do payroll.
Any other questions? Got a word?
Trustee Brewer.
No.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Gesenski? Trustee Tad?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Motion carried. Second item, motion to place the mayor, place Mary Mc-Mayor. Okay, Mayor Hall. And trustee Congress at the end of, uh, at the end of the meeting agenda.
So... Second.
The move by trustee Williams, second by trustee Todd, any question? Got a word?
Trustee Grant?
No.
Trustee Gesenski? Trustee Tad?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, um, I just, I just wanted to reiterate one thing and that was the fact of the, um, um, meeting that's going to be held here with the, or I guess open, open meeting be held with the candidates that are coming even trying to, uh, run for office. I think you guys should actually come out and talk to these candidates. This is not a local election. These are your judges and, uh, people that are running for statewide office. You should come out and ask questions, go just last days ago, not answer because these are the ones that make the law for all of us in the state. You should ask questions about your, uh, your, uh, judges. You should find out who they are. Do they represent us or they don't represent us? What do they do? What type of, um, judges do they do? Are they circuit courts, Supreme Court or whatever? But that's a good time to come out and meet these, um, people that are running because once they get in, they're in. So especially if, you know, if you, if you're a resident here, even if you're not a resident, you're a voting person, you should come out and, and meet the people that are going to be holding these particular offices. It is very important. It is very important to ask questions. Ask them the questions. That being said, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So... You're right. That's who's... Oh, wait, please, please.
Trustee Brewer, choice.
You don't have to, trustee, that doesn't have to be... You want to put some on the agenda?
It's going to be a question about trustee.
Okay.
The motion of the boards to adjourn is a move by group. Again, trustee Whit, second by trustee Brewer, all in favor?
Aye.
Right. Yeah, you can, uh...